Oh wait, you got, wait a minute, go ahead.
Go ahead Patty.
Welcome everyone and welcome to the Environmental Quality Commission meeting for the town of Newington. It today is Thursday, September 8th, 2022, and we're having our regular meeting on Zoom platform. It is at 6:31 and when we call the meeting to order. And whoever had something on in the background, please mute yourself. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, when, not yet, when it comes to.
Rob, would you give us roll call, please?
Sure, Chairperson Foley.
Here.
Commissioner Banco. Commissioner Banco.
You got, you gotta answer so we can hear you.
Commissioner Capps, absent. Commissioner Sario.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Okay.
And we got a full, we've had a full group, great. Okay, and thank you for joining us, Councilor Padreco. We can say the pledge of allegiance together, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the United States of America.
Into the Republic for which it stands. One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty.
That's it for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, first order of business is August 11th minute. And again, I want to go on the record, very nice to Mr. Hillman for taking our minutes, we really appreciate it. Allows all of us to be able to participate. So do I have any corrections or omissions or anything that we have to deal with?
I have a correction.
Please, please go ahead, Commissioner Banco.
Under events, number three.
Okay, hold on. Let me get to that page. Yes.
Does Commissioner Banco discuss the questioner? I think he means questionnaire.
Yes, I do.
That is, thank you.
Would you, would you make sure that appears in the minute so that, because that will confuse everybody? That was, I guess, what do you call it? That's when the automatic corrections make things kind of weird. Anything else anybody saw?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes?
Okay, motion by Commissioner Banco. Can I get a second?
I second it.
First, who, Joe?
Yep.
Thank you. And is every, is the balance up with the two of us in favor, all four of us? Aye.
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 Thank you, unanimous. Thank you. All right, does anybody have any changes to that, tonight's current agenda? At least, if we, if you have something new, we'll bring it in under new business, okay? But is there anything else that we have to move around? Hearing none, let's move on. Okay. How many people do we have in public participation? Anyone?
No, we had one and they disappeared.
Okay, maybe they'll come back.
Okay.
All right, we'll keep going. And if they come back and they have to go early, we'll make sure that we address it. Sustainable CT. I have really nothing more to report. I was, I started working on making up the list that I reported on last month, which is finding some of the easier or shorter or smaller stuff, and I haven't had a chance to speak with Renata. So that's all I have. I really have nothing more. Monkey donkey. Commissioner Sario, you're on.
I don't have much of an update at this point.
We have a new number of where we are?
We're at 262.
252, not bad.
Excuse me, 262?
Oh, thank you.
So it's, it's, last month it was 261, so it's, it's.
It's more than we had yesterday, that's all that matters. So we can't grow something unless we you know, go a little at a time. So thank you so much, your posts have been good. I try to make sure I get back out there every couple days.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's when I need anybody else, if you can get out there and just give it a like or whatever, or make a comment. Again, that's how it, that's, all of a sudden, people are starting to notice. And it's going to take a little while, but we'll be there. Anything more you want to say about it? Sorry.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Padreco and Mr. Hillman. Excuse me for your suggestions.
You okay?
I know Karen, I learned something from that. I thought they were fully recyclable, so.
Super.
Thank you for posting. I think a lot of other people might have filmed, and I, and I know you had posted it earlier, but they're so ubiquitous and use now that people need to be reminded.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, too, possibly to talk to the Chamber of Commerce or some, you know, even just to mention in our local travels at our local restaurants.
Well, that's, that's a good idea.
That's actually in some of our under the sustainable CT, the thing that we can put together that we can then use to help support local business like restaurants or a particular group of businesses that, you know, like businesses, and that would be helpful. So I, that's part of the list I'm compiling right now because I wanted to come up with a bunch of the eat, what I'd call easy stuff. And that would work really well on the Facebook page to to the horn of people in town. Excellent. Okay, anything more? Letter C, positions on the commission. I haven't run into anybody, but one guy that I do know, he's a trash hauler, and he changed jobs. And so I want to see with the fact that he moved from one hauler to a different hauler, neither of them are ours. And see, maybe he might like to join us. But he, he had been quiet for a while, so I didn't want to bug him, but all of a sudden he seems to be back in the saddle, so I just got to write it in my list here, Mike. But he seems very, very, especially about recycling and garbage. He's, because he works in it every day. I mean, not in it, in a truck every day. So, all right, that's all I have. Okay. Okay, letter D, thank you, Jose. Litter pickup on, for the citizens group, do we have anything upcoming?
Commissioner. We do not. The September meeting was, was canceled. Excuse me.
You okay?
Yeah, I just, I just sometimes cough.
I know that feeling.
The September meeting, there was only one weekend that Essling was available to host it, and the park was also hosting an event that same day, so she.
That was at Clem Lamir?
I think so.
Okay.
Excuse me. So she canceled September and she's in the process of rescheduling October.
Okay, super.
And I don't have an update for August. The event did happen.
All right, we're going to get those, an update, so we can put them in our sustainable CT, could they count for events?
Yeah, I did ask her, so I'll follow up.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's really weird. All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Banco, I have a, we're talking next on Balltillcon.
Okay.
Oh, and he caught my spelling error off of the agenda. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Banco.
Well, the air quality sensor along Hartford Road is operating well. And on the screen, you will see in the green square, it gives report for August 30th. So you're saying, well, the level six, that's low. What's the big deal? But look in the yellow box on the screen that's in the green box. It shows we had one day, in other words, 24 hours at a level of 58. And for the week, the average was 50. In the green box on the screenshot for a level of 51 to 100, EPA says air quality is acceptable, however, there may be a risk for some people with 24 hours of exposure. We have had that level of over 50 for 24 hours. If you look in the yellow box, you'll see it shows a day and it shows a week.
Is it, when you say the yellow, you mean the green box with the yellow squares?
Right.
Yes? Thank you, okay.
So how dangerous is this? It depends upon the amount of silica in the pollutants. I emailed Barbara from the Health Department asking about a, having a laboratory, get an air sample, analyzing that sample for silica. She has not gotten back to me. So yeah, we've hit, we've hit that, that was my concern, that was my concern all along. Is, are we going to have a 24 hour period? Despite, like you see on the screen, the spike's nothing, the spikes last five, 10 minutes. But EPA looks at the sustained level for six hours, you know, one hour for one day, one 24 hour period. And yep, I was watching and there is a 24 hour level of 50.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, we gotta, we gotta have that, we've got to have that air pollution coming off the quarry. Quarry analyzed. I mean, how many, how many of these 24 hour periods over 50 are we going to have? What's dangerous though, again, is the silica content of the pollutants. So I hope, I mean, Barbara, from what I understood, she was going to do issue, in other words, she was going to contact the lab that would analyze the silica content of the pollution. So I guess it's just so, right now, it's just wait and see, see, see what we see what she does and see what the results are.
Okay, Joyce, I want to say thank you. You have been, your diligence in powering this up has made a difference in finding this information for the environmental, because I don't think in the past, when I look at some old minutes, that we have had as great of information on understanding the air quality regarding excuse me. In this one section of town. Now, I know the quarry is kind of big over there, but do we have any idea how far away that makes across town?
No, I know initially when Barbara was talking about setting up a sensor, she had said possibly setting up two. We ended up obviously with one. So no, we don't know how far out the pollution extends from the quarry. Is it a mile? Is it two miles? We don't know. It would be good if we could get another center or two or three kind of like circling around the quarry.
Okay.
But
One step that you're doing right now is fabulous, because we would never know this kind of information before.
I think what's important right now is getting out, getting that silica content, because I mean, we've got two schools in that area along Hartford Road, so.
A lot of houses around there, too.
Yep, houses, businesses, yep. So we'll have to wait and see what, and from my knowledge, the Balltillcon annual meeting is in October, so hopefully.
Is that the, the normal meeting that they hold?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have, do you have a date for that yet?
Not yet, no.
Not yet, okay. As soon as, as soon as you get the date, would you make sure that you send send it to the four of us? And don't, and don't include any discussion, just say, here's the date that that's going to happen. We know you're going to cover it. But if anybody else wants to attend it, they could.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the, I'm sure, you know, Barbara will be reporting at that meeting in October. It would be nice if she had the lab results for the silica content of the fluids for the October meeting.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
Great job, I appreciate that you bring us really kind of very pertinent information that is needed to know today in our town. Alrighty. Letter F, when we get back to the thing. There we go, okay. All right, the, the school poster and essay comment, I ran into a problem trying to find all my stuff on that, so I am still going through an old computer, that, that stuff should be on it, because that happened literally at the beginning of COVID, and for some reason I haven't been able to put my finger on it, so I'm still working on it. Then we have waterfall. Any, go ahead, Commissioner Sario.
I don't really have an update at this point, but I know Joyce has worked, Commissioner Banco has worked on some ideas. If you wanted to share what you were thinking.
Did, did you and Patty get the email I sent?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, honey.
I, I sent an email to you and Karen about the things we need for the waterfall festival. Did you see that? Did you read it?
I might not, this past week was really tough on me, but I will go back tonight and look for it and respond if I had not responded. Apparently I haven't, if you're telling me I didn't.
Well, I sent it to you and Karen, Karen said she got it, so, okay, so here, so here's, if we're going to have a booth at the waterfall festival, this is what we're going to need.
All right, did you, did you contact Chamber of Commerce?
Well, let me go through my report.
Oh, go, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please, just, thank you, shut me out.
Okay, so, so if we're gonna, if we're going to have a booth at the festival, we're going to need two folding tables. I know if anybody has one or two at Cabaro. If not, if not, they're $55 a piece at Walmart. We're going to be, we're going to be needing one of those canopy tents, 10 by 10 feet. That, no one has one. They cost $65. And then the basil seed packets to give away. I contacted Stonehedge Nursery, they said they had 10 packets, which would be about what we would need, but Donnie never got back to me, so I'll have to give him a call again. I'm hoping they'll donate the basil packets.
When you say a packet, like a little sheet packet?
Just, yeah, the regular packet of seed that say basil on it.
Okay, okay, very good.
And then we're going to need a banner sign that says Newington Environmental Quality Commission. And that is $45 by the printer.
A banner. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm making some numbers. Is that in your emails to me?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not sure I had all these numbers together at that time I sent your email.
Okay, go ahead.
And then the booth registration at the Chamber of Commerce, which I haven't done yet, is $60. So we're talking, if I have to buy all this stuff, $280. So I guess my question is, do we want it?
All right, so Mike, okay, when we sent in the expenses for maybe I should just call Janet and find out, because we have a $500 budget. Okay? In the town budget that started July 1st.
Plus, do we have a carryover from last year?
No, there's no such thing as carryovers.
Okay.
Okay, so we get a budget, so let me, I will do that, which today, yeah, I can call Janet, she's the head, the head accountant person, and have her look up where we stand, because I know we reimbursed you something, but I'm not sure which.
Yeah, that wasn't much, that was like 30 something dollars.
Yeah, but I don't know which budget, was it the, the budget that ended this past June 30th, or is it in this budget? So let me make a note, I'm doing that right now.
Okay, so then also we need two clipboards, I have two clipboards.
Okay, I have a clipboard, too.
I can print out the climate change quiz on my laser printer. And I can also print out a sign that says climate change quiz, everyone gets a prize.
Okay.
And I've, I've been collecting numerous items from CNN by Nothing Newington to give away. In other words, those things will be placed on the free recycled items table.
Nice idea.
And then we might get the basil seed packets donated from Stonehedge Nursery, so hopefully. And so again, my question is, do we move forward? Do we want to spend this money?
Well, if we have it available in our budget, we could. Which I think we probably do have it available in our budget. So that, you know, that would be super. You might be able to get the booth from the chamber for free. Did you talk to them, did you talk to them directly?
I contacted them, but they were closed for vacation. I haven't contacted them since then, but
Okay.
I mean, why, why, why do you think they would give it to us for free?
Because we're a town, we're a town thing. They might. Doesn't hurt to ask, they can say no.
Okay.
I mean, doesn't, it never hurts to ask. And it's, they say no, you move on, and you don't have to argue over it, it's a good thing. This is very, very good information. Okay, excellent.
My, my other, my other question is is there, I mean, can we have a like a commission credit card or debit card or something like that?
Nope, they probably won't allow it, but I'll ask Janet, I'll put it on my question list. Because we don't have a bank account.
Maybe we should, maybe we should get one.
I'm not sure we're allowed to have one. I'd have to go back to the rules.
The debit cards and credit cards aren't even given to departments and department heads, so.
Oh, well, they, they're big shots.
Well, I guess, I mean, I mean, what, I, I don't mind, but I mean, we're looking at me putting out $280 for this thing and then waiting two or three months to get reimbursed. I just don't think that's.
Well, we're, we're going to do better on, if you're going to spend that, you're going to hand it in on the page that we're going to just feel a little more efficient on that, so that goes back to Janet's office right away.
If, if, actually, if the, if we are going to be purchasing them, our vendors that are already set up in Munis for the town, she would just do a purchase order, and you'd be able to purchase them that way instead of having to outlay the money. You'd have to reach out to Janet, let her know where you want to buy these items and what they are, and she may be able to do a purchase order for you to expedite it.
Okay, I will ask her how we go about the purchase order. All right, so I'm going to ask Janet, the dollars we have left in our budget, debit card, we kind of know that's not, that's not a go, but we can maybe do a purchase order without, out by O U T of personal cash. Okay. Got it. All right, I will get those answers and get it back to you, Joyce, Commissioner Banco. Perfect. And thank you for their work on putting that together.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you. I also wanted to add that I have a folding table, so I have a card table and then a long table. So I don't think you need to buy any tables. I can bring both of them. I don't think we need both of them, but we can, I can bring those.
You have like a card, card table and a long table?
Yes.
Okay, so I could just, I could cross that off the list of things we need.
Correct.
Yeah.
That would be great.
And does anybody have a tent that the, the canopy?
I have a tent, but it's not here, and I won't be able to get it back here in time. But I'm trying to think, who do I know with a 10 by 10 that we could borrow? I think I can get it from.
And you know, Patty, they're very particular about that, because I have a 10 by 12 tent, and they won't accept it because they don't want it sticking out or front or back or anything to have people tripping over it, so it's got to be 10 by 10.
Now, I know that, but I know of a 10 by 10, I think I could borrow, I will, let me write this, 10 by 10, 10 by 10. The Boy Scouts, John Donahue. I don't believe there are way that is a scouting troop, and so therefore we might be able to borrow the tent. And then we just give it back to them. So let me give a, I will let you know in the next couple days that if it's available or not, how's that?
Okay.
Perfect. I love our level of cooperation, we're tremendous people, thank you. Anything more for our waterfall festival? Now, if I continue to feel as well as I am, you can count on me to be there that day. Maybe not that early, but I will, I, I think I should be able to venture out and be outside for like the time, so.
That's great.
Yeah, it's kind of a little frightening right now to feel this well, so keep fingers crossed, everyone. Everybody seems to be, the doctors and the nurses were impressed with me today, so fingers crossed.
That's great.
That's only a few weeks away, so I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
That's great. I had one more thing, Joyce, as far as the.
Please, go ahead.
As far as the cost goes, you had mentioned that the banner sign. As far as the cost goes, you had mentioned that the banner sign being forty-five dollars, how, how large is that sign? Do you know the, the footage?
Um, I think they told me. I don't have it in front of me, but it's probably, I'm guessing, four feet by ten, ten inches, ten and maybe ten inches by four feet, something like that.
Okay. Because the reason I ask is if we're gonna spend the money on that, we want it to be generic to use for many, many years in the future, right? To just and fit a table. It sounds like that would be the good size. Does everybody agree that would be, you know, a good use of that?
I think that would be a great size because it probably, we can tack it on to the top of a ten by ten.
Yeah.
Sign, we know.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask them to put those metal grommets or whatever it is.
Yeah, so we can put a little, that's fucking hang them up.
Right, or string or bungee cord or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, excellent idea. God, we're brilliant. I love us. Okay, that's really great.
Excellent, thank you.
Okey-dokey. I'm looking forward to September twenty-fourth if I can make it. I really want to do it. I haven't been able to do a lot of things. But we're getting there. Okay, anything more on the waterfall? We'll move on. The big man of the hour, our very own sanitation department person, Mr. Hellman. What's going on in the world of garbage and recycling in town?
Unfortunately, I don't really have much to report this month, mainly because.
We have no garbage?
Well, we've had plenty of garbage, but I haven't finished. The monthly report is not done. It'll be done tomorrow. And we've pretty much been knee-deep in paving this month, so I really haven't had a chance to do much on the sanitation side.
How, um, how do we manage any waste regarding the pavement and paving? What happens in that area? Because obviously, that's like, I know you've been milling streets. I've seen that.
Oh, yeah, so the.
What happens with all that, well, I call that garbage. I know it does make it our garbage.
That, that gets, um, we take some as the town, and we use that. So we have some parking lots that are, that are milled, that are, that are, are filled with milling, so we take, it takes, keep some on our side to use to fix and repair them and pathways and things like that. But Tilcon, who is, does the milling, they take it because they are required to include what they call RAP, which is recycled asphalt into new asphalt. So I think it's fifteen percent of the milling has to be put into the new asphalt, so they end up recycling it. So all of the millings end up getting reused, whether they.
All the millings that we pull off the street in order to do, to do the the new pavement or the improved pavement, all of that in, either goes to Tilcon or we use part of it?
Correct, yeah. We keep a small amount. We keep maybe a hundred yards. And we stockpile, like I said, just to touch up parking lots and pathways and whatnot in town. And then the remainder goes to Tilcon, yes.
And then.
It's all, it's all. Reused. What's that?
Tilcon takes the balance.
That is correct, yes. So about one-hundred percent of it is reused or recycled.
That's fantastic.
Patty? Can we get sustainable points for that?
I wish we could. That, that's not a, I don't think that they're gonna be a point generator because it's a requirement. But we do have some point generators. That's what's going on the list for Rob to give us some info on. Is things that we put at the, I'm sorry to interrupt, but please correct me. A couple of things that we put in that are not required to be by the state of Connecticut. Like technology, that's not, that's not a required recyclable, is it?
Um, certain ones are required, but we do go above and beyond and accept other items.
Okay, because those are the ones we're gonna, you're gonna give me some background and insight because we get points for the stuff that is not required.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. All right, so, so highway actually gets all of it reused and recycled. That's wonderful. How many miles of streets are we doing this year?
Um, close to, close to seven, and we're also doing West Meadow Cemetery.
Oh, really? Okay. Seven miles of streets in West Meadow? And we're the contractor. We don't hire, or how does that work?
Oh, no, it's, we go off the state bid and Tilcon does the milling and Tilcon does the paving.
Okay, so we're not doing it with our truck?
No, we do not, no.
Oh, okay, seven miles and cemetery. I was just curious if, if that was us or that's, but that's all done through Tilcon?
Yeah, we, we don't have the manpower or the equipment to do. We can do parking lots and small pathways with our equipment, but something of that scale, we don't have the equipment or the manpower.
Okay, it just, I just want everybody to understand, this is a big area. Not only we're talking about our regular garbage and our, and our recycling, but just the fact that then we do miles of streets per year and, and other types of items, so that everybody's familiar. By chance, can I get lucky? Could you tell us how many town streets, a number of, how many miles in town streets? Because we know we have lots of miles in state of Connecticut streets.
Um.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm drawing, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a blank. It's a hundred and, a hundred and ten or a hundred and twelve. I'm drawing, I'm drawing a blank right now, but it's, it's roughly a hundred and ten miles of.
Good enough. Plus or minus a hundred and ten miles worth of red, town-owned streets.
Town only, yes. We have, we have roughly ten, fifteen miles of road in town that are maintained by the state.
Okay, that would be like the Berlin Turnpike and.
Cedar, Willard, New Britain Avenue.
Okay.
Any, any street with a root number, basically.
Okay, one hundred and ten miles of town streets. I didn't realize that. Now, you know, we should, which we call a game. All these little trivia things that we've learned. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hellman.
You're welcome.
All righty, anybody have any new business you'd like to bring up? Hearing nothing at this time. This is really good. Thank you very much. And then we're back to the infamous public participation place. Did anybody come back?
Nope, they did not come back.
Oh, well, but we'll ask them to come back again. Okay, let's see. All right, so commissioners, does anybody else have anything they want to add for tonight's meeting? This is your chance to say something. So we can start with, how about Commissioner Trumbetta? Anything you want to add to tonight?
I just think we have to keep on top of that Tilcon Hartford Road.
Okay.
And, and air quality business, because, you know, there's a lot of things unanswered. And I think that's the major concern of Newington.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, then, let's see, Commissioner Bunkel.
Actually, I have a factoid. Think about the water around the earth. Be it oceans, lakes, rivers, water in the clouds. Believe it or not, the water on and around the earth is a constant figure. I don't know how many gallons, trillion, billion gallons, but it's a constant amount. It just.
Doesn't go up and down?
It just moves. It moves from, it might be snow on Mount Kilimanjaro one year, and it might be in the Pacific Ocean the next year. But it's constant amount of water on the earth. It just changes location or changes its appearance, I guess. In the clouds, in the water, in the river, under the ocean. But it's a constant amount of water. So the water you're drinking from your faucet today might have been on Mount Kilimanjaro one hundred years ago. So it's precious. It's, it might have been, maybe Caesar drank that water. So water is precious and it's a constant amount on the earth. So it's, it's a natural resource. We've got to take up and notice and help preserve. That's my factoid.
That's a really cool fact.
And there's water, there's water shortages in Connecticut, I think.
Over in the eastern part, there're severe, severe droughts still over in the eastern part in Rhode Island.
But we have plenty of water full up at MDC, so we could go for a year and a half without running out. We gotta love, we gotta love our, our water company. Let's see. And now Commissioner Cero, bring up the end here.
I just wanted to say thank you again to Commissioner Bunkel for all your work with the Purple Air and with Tilcon Air Measurements and with the Waterfall Festival, and I love your factoid. Mr. Hellman, thank you so much for the information about the recycling of the asphalt and what a great question. Chairperson Foley, what an excellent question. I think that's wonderful that it's all recycled and that's good news. So thank you for sharing.
Excellent. All right, we're now looking at, I still have to fix this. No. Rob, do you have anything more you want to add?
I do not.
Okay. Counselor Badreko, you've been a little quiet.
Yeah.
I hope you're well and thank you for coming to the meeting.
Oh, no, not a problem. Um, nothing much happening, but I did get a copied in on an interesting email today. And actually, Rob Hillman was mentioned. Obviously, I mean, anybody who walks or drives in this town knows that geese are becoming an incredible problem, more so than usual. And it's not, unfortunately, it's not migratory geese anymore. It's, it's geese that stay here year-round. And the town, Parks and Rec is, is fielding more and more calls, you know, from people, particularly around the around the government center, the park, you know, Mill Pond Park, the library. Just getting to be a slurry mess. And so Clay contacted Bill DeMaio and said that, you know, we've got to start doing something about this. And also, I guess, Rob, you've been involved and because it's becoming a highway responsibility as well, that, you know, you can't even use sweepers to, or water to clean up this mess because it just becomes like slippery slime.
Yes.
So Parks and Rec spoke with, yes, Parks and Rec spoke with USDA this summer. And actually, I did some earlier research this summer too, because I brought it to town manager's attention. I says, this is getting ridiculous. We can't even enjoy our park anymore. You can't walk. And at that time, unfortunately, you go on all the websites and the only real solution is, you know, having these geese for Thanksgiving dinner, but that's not necessarily a, an option that is palatable to the public. So USDA got back to Parks and Rec and said that they use a variety of methods to disrupt the comfort, including having nets to recapture and relocate them, using what is it, fireworks to scare them, lights, chasing, battling eggs, whatever. And it's gotten to the point where the town is gonna have to do something about that. And I guess they've allocated some money between now and July first to try and get something done to resolve the geese problem in a way that will be palatable to the public, shall we say.
Okay, I got a question. When you said now to July first, to next summer.
Right, well, that's, that's all that's for the budget because.
Yeah, okay.
It's expensive. It's expensive to do this. And also, I don't know if any, any of you know, but it was in his email, and I also, you know, when I did research early in the summer, each goose produces a pound of goose poop every day. And you look at the, yeah.
Stick that in our, let's stick that in our little numbers that we have to remember.
Um, yeah, I, I guess, again, the problem is that they used to be migratory, but now they're just hanging around all year, so. And I don't know, Rob, it looks like you've been involved in this discussion as well.
Yeah, I just, I just got involved about, well, almost the time that Clay had sent that letter out because he had been, it's gotten, we've always had a problem, especially around Mill Pond, but it's gotten significantly worse this year. So he was doing his best to power wash the sidewalks and everything, and then it became an issue where it was just accumulating in the parking lots. And when people were getting out of their vehicles, especially staff, early in the morning, it was in the parking lot. They were stepping on it. So he had asked me to go in with a street sweeper and sweep it as best we could, but as you already commented, it, it just kind of smears it for, I'm sorry to be, you know, kind of gross, but it doesn't really pick it up. There is no real good way of cleaning it off the pavement, so.
There was, there was something, and I am going to venture a guess. It was at least twenty years ago, okay? And we had run into this goose poop problem of them not just visiting Newington. They were taking up residency and they did come out and they had, it's gotta be twenty years ago. And we did some, whatever you want to call it, disruptions to make them leave, and it seemed to help for a while. But apparently, they liked staying here like all of us.
What, what, why are they attracted here for? And it just, and not leaving during the normal migration season?
Well, when, when you get a bunch that decide to stick around and then they tell their friends, and then they tell their friends and then they don't migrate the way they should. Part of migration in, in the big, in the big earth picture, migration paths have changed. I read an article just recently on a very short, not very scientific, but migration patterns change. And if the migration pattern changes, they end up not going anywhere because they forgot where to go. And then it starts affecting generations of geese. I don't know how long a goose, a goose lives. But then there's generations and they're not teaching the new ones how to migrate. So there is, do I want to say that it has to do with global warming or anything? No, because the article is not what you call very scientific, but that's what they said, some of the, because we're not the only people in New England, let alone that are in the goose, geese path, and they're just deciding to hang out. But we did have this problem and it's gotta be, God, I've lived here that long. Yeah, it's gotta be at least twenty years ago where we had a problem a long time ago. But we did some kind of disruption and they went away for a while. But they're back.
I want to add to that, if I may, Commissioner Badreko, I had promised you I would get an answer and I still have not gotten an answer. I will make another phone call to the condo association that we use here to, to disrupt the geese. I have not seen them in years. Maybe they've moved to Mill Pond. But we have a.
But we have a, we have a retaining pond one block over from us off of Lewis Street. And that's where I believe they are, which affects the businesses and their parking lots, I'm sure. But it's, it's not on our sidewalk here. So it was some kind of foam that was sprayed humane to, to, to the animal and not disruptive to the grass or, or any, any kind of animal or pets. So I will get back to you and hopefully soon get an answer as far as the cost goes and, and who and where.
Does anybody want, like, a whole bunch of wild turkeys? Over at my condo, we got like a whole big gathering that gets together and they walk around and hold meetings and everything in the middle of the yard. So we have to be somewhat thankful in, in one respect that we do have animals. And I did have a sighting of a deer at Crown Ridge. It was still a young one, probably one born this, this past spring, but it was nice to actually see that happen, besides seeing coyotes and so forth that we have here. But we do have a bit of wildlife that, which is starting to come back, which is kind of a nice thing to happen in town, provided that they're not pests like the geese seem to have gotten a little over, over, over their welcome. Anything else, Ms. Counselor Bedraco?
No, but you brought up, it's interesting, because I was at a zoning meeting or something, I can't remember, or maybe it was a conservation meeting, and they're talking about, you know, people are seeing more wildlife in town. And, you know, that, that's nice, but it's also not necessarily good, because what's happening is because there's so much development going on that the communities of like deer or wild turkeys or coyotes, whatever, they're being fragmented. And they're losing their natural habitat. So that's why they're coming into the neighborhoods now, so. It's a double edged sword.
We, we kind of keep losing out some of our green pathway, which allowed, at least when I moved here, which was a long time ago. We always had deer in the backyard and, and other animals, and then they started building over here on this side of the turnpike. And all of a sudden, all of those critters decided to go someplace else because now they couldn't walk through as easily. And so, I mean, they're, and they're part of our environment, but we, like we said, we don't want the ones that are pests. As long as we keep an idea, but good.
You know, what's interesting is that this, this geese problem is not, you know, unique to Newington. I mean, it's a lot of the suburbs in Connecticut, but also it's nationwide. You know, it, it's becoming a problem. It's not funny, I'm sorry, but it's just kind of struck me as odd. Some of the communities, not here in Connecticut, but they're actually, because the only way, quite frankly, to permanently rid of the problem is permanently ridding of the geese. So some communities are allowing hunting and then donating the carcasses to food shelters. But, but the town manager didn't think that would go over well here in Newington.
We're, we're awful close together to be shooting a gun off in the neighborhood.
Exactly. Yeah, Wednesday afternoons from five to seven, you can go hunt geese at the Mill Pond Park and donate it to a food shelter. It's just crazy.
If you roast a goose really nice or a goose really well, it's very yummy. But that's a lot of goose to eat.
Exactly.
You never know. I mean, sometimes an idea like that can actually evolve into something that we can actually use. So thank you for bringing it up. Alright. Thank you so much again for being with us. We really appreciate your insight. Alright, so our next meeting will be coming up on Thursday. Did I actually do this right? The thirteenth. At six thirty, we'll, we'll meet on Zoom again. Keep it easy for everybody. Hopefully, by then, I might be really starting to get around. We don't know, we'll find out. And we could meet in person if not, we do get to save some time by being in a Zoom meeting so that we do well. Whatever, whatever we can do will be great. And if there's nothing else, I'll entertain an adjournment motion.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Thank you, Commissioner Bunkel. Joe, you got a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Trumbetta. All in favor? Aye. And thank you all for your time and efforts this past month in pulling this together. I'm just gonna, really quick. Joyce, just update your list of items for the Waterfall Festival. If you can send that to me, I will double check with them. And if you know where you're gonna purchase it, then I'll double check with Janet as to the purchase order method of doing it so that it just happens. And then I will also then let you know about the ten by ten tent. That's, that's something else I have. Is there anything else, anybody else needed something from me? We're all done. Thank you.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.